Today and we are going to do a session on the on the Work the Web Community Training Program. Hello everybody! And again, we are using Slack conferencing and screen sharing, so my participants are free to draw whatever they want on the screen, as long as they draw hearts. That's the thing. You can do whatever, as long as we keep it child-safe, kind of. Right, so it is Sunday. Anya, yesterday you guys had a session without me because I had to work. Could you just brief me on what happened yesterday? What did you cover?
Yes, so Tassilo took the time yesterday to present the project a little bit better, so that everyone can have a better understanding of, I guess, what the web app is doing, and especially because it's in German. Yeah, so it took a time to present that, and then I was having some stream issues as well.
Yes, so I'm not the only one.
Yeah, I think Slack, I'm using Slack in the browser, but for some reason it doesn't agree much with my stream setup so far. But anyways, I think there was still a bit of time for Tassilo to talk with Kima and Daniel about what they could be potentially doing on the project. Exactly, so it's been mainly project talk, I guess.
Okay, did you manage to get some of the PRs reviewed and merged, or something in that regard?
No, I don't, yeah, actually after Tassilo presented, that's when I started having issues and I just couldn't show the screen at all, so I figured it would be not very practical.
Right, okay, so we're gonna start with that probably, if everything works, or if it doesn't, then we want to start with it. Right, right, right. I don't... Okay, let's see. Now it starts to act up already, you know, it's ridiculous. It's simply ridiculous. There we go. Right, so we're gonna go to GitHub and then Agile Ventures. And we'll see where we end up. Right, Tassilo, you said you had some questions just before we went online. What would fire away, brother?
Yeah, so I think, you can hear me, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think in general, like especially me, but maybe also the others, I need an idea of like what steps we should go through. So actually, also yesterday I was struggling a little bit presenting the project because I'm not too sure how we're gonna, like what steps we should follow and what things to do first, how to collaborate so that we can like progress well.
Okay, right, right, right. In what regard, you mean, like?
Like, I think like if I would go on myself, if I would be alone, I would probably start moving parts to the atomic system. I just looked at a tutorial today and it sounds actually pretty good to do it that way, but I'm not sure if this is something that we should do now or if it's, if you don't see this as relevant now, or how to, like, or if it's now only about tests or if it's like refactoring components and at the same time writing tests or in beforehand, or if it's first of like refactoring everything to functional components, or...
Right, right.
Like, there's a lot of things to start with, but I don't know which one is the best one. And also, like, I wondered a lot, like, if we move and restructure components and folder structures, doesn't this also affect a lot like the test structures? Because then we might have like a completely different structure of the files and the test, then also we have to rip apart again.
Right, right, right. Yes, so, but, yes, I would say that a lot of answers, the answers to these questions lies in your question itself. I would say that, you know, if I were the one to call the shots on this one, which I am not, just so we understand each other, I can advise you guys, but I don't want to, you know, take on the role as a project leader, anyway. I think this kind of decisions, all of these questions are questions that should be directed to the development team rather than to me, but I can weigh in on them. And also, I also feel that we kind of covered a lot of this already. I would say that there are certain processes that needs to happen. If I were in charge, I would say the first thing I would allocate resources to is to cover the most crucial functionality in automated tests, right? That is definitely the thing that I would do, for many reasons. Quality, of course, that's one thing. The second thing is that writing tests is a good way for developers to start, to get to know the application better. Does that make sense?
Definitely.
Right, so I would say, you know, testing and starting to and starting to make sure that it runs. Now, there was something you said about, you know, would it affect tests if we make the refactorings? Now, I don't know if anybody wants to take this down or take some notes on this one, but so the general idea in refactoring, I will have another talk within this Work the Web Training Program about refactoring per se, but the general idea of refactoring is that your functionality doesn't necessarily change in any way. Well, it shouldn't change, actually. That's what refactoring means, that you keep the functionality, but you just change the way that it is, your code implements that functionality. So if you have a test saying that if I click on this, then I should see something, you know, after some data has been processed, and then if you just change the underlying way to achieve the same result, the test can stay the same, so that would not be affected. But that's a textbook scenario. In reality, quite often, unfortunately, when you do refactoring, you also alter functionality, not only how things are being done, but also what is being done. And then, yes, of course, that would change the way your tests are, you know, do tests work and how they behave and so on. But that just comes with the territory, so you have to work parallel, update tests and update the functionality. So that's, you know, with my limited knowledge about this project, I would say now that we are past open sourcing it, then the next step is to write tests or identify the most important parts of the application and write tests about them, and then identify new functionality that you want to add to this application, and then, of course, start to develop that. Does that make sense?
Okay, so before creating new features, we don't have to go through the step to refactoring also the structure of, like, changing it to atomic design or anything like that?
I, look, I don't, this, today is like the first time I hear about atomic design at this point, so what we kind of discussed a few meetings ago was this, the idea, should we rewrite the entire application versus not rewriting? And we kind of chose a middle way, do you remember that discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that we chose that middle way, and in that middle way, we can, we can work with, we should definitely, you know, work with testing and then adding some new features, you know, to enhance the user experience and, you know, bring more value to users, and then in parallel, perhaps, look into rewriting parts of the app that, so that it could be of even better quality than it is right now, right? But that's a parallel work. So I don't really know how, you know, rewrite atomic design fits into this plan that we discussed and agreed upon, so I can't really answer that, to be honest.
Because like for me, I thought within the last days to maybe focus right now because I have a lot of time now to clean up files, to make it simpler, to make it more lightweight, and then, then for me, this thought came up to, okay, then maybe it's the right time to already like move stuff into another system so that there's just less code to look upon.
It's your project, brother, so, you know, if you, I mean, if this is what you want to do, then absolutely go ahead and do that, you know, it's definitely something that is doable. I had the wrong repo up on, sorry, but... The, right, you can definitely, definitely work with that, absolutely. But I mean, this is a discussion that needs to be held together with, you know, the rest of the team as well. So Daniel, do you have any input on what is being said at this point?
Yeah, Thomas, I did this course with Tassilo during the last meeting, which was yesterday, and so it was, we were able to come up with a task for me to do. And I think I shared the same question with Tassilo, but like you said, the dev team to be complete before we make a decision. What next? We shouldn't, the project shouldn't be random, to my understanding, which would be tasks done shouldn't be random, so... But I do believe that maybe one of the weekdays we'll be able to come up with that, and then let's go in the direction as planned, so that's what I've got to say.
Right, yes, absolutely. So we do have this backlog, you know, and on ZenHub or in Issues, we can find things to do, so, you know, one of the side effects of this approach, where we split down things or split up things in smaller tasks, is that developers should be able to just pick one and do it. And I think that, I don't know if this was ever done, but at some point we went over the application and came up with this, you know, fairly broad task that could be defined and documented about silencing the warnings of the app. And I don't know if the entire app is silent, you know, there are no warnings anymore, but I know that Tassilo worked on that. We have a few PRs regarding this on, in the repo. Anya, you worked on that, I guess, in some regard. And so that can be definitely, that is one very simple task for people to get into that could be done even before we write automated tests. I see that, again, there are 1, 2, 3, 3 pull requests that are addressing fixing warnings, so that is a good, good first thing, often. I don't know. But there's another thing that I am a little bit worried about, or I don't know if I should be worried about that, and that is that we have so many outstanding pull requests, right? So that needs to be kind of addressed before, you know, we start to diverge and that they become cumbersome to merge because, you know, somebody else might, you know, touch this, some of the files that have been worked on in those, on those branches, and so on. So I would say that one of the main priorities, you know, very practical ones, is to go over these things and merge them. Would you agree, people?
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I don't merge my own stuff, and so I can't merge this PR flow document. I can probably remove the "work in progress" tag because I think it's kind of done. I don't know if anybody else would like to clarify anything in this PR. Perhaps I should actually change some stuff on it. So I can continue to work on that. But the others here, are they, are they like done? Should they be merged, or what's the status of these things?
So all of mine can be merged, that can be reviewed, at least.
Right, did you, you requested my reviews, right? Right. Right, you were, yeah, so you say you're confused about the files changed. What exactly are you confused about here, Tassilo, so I understand?
I think it's below that, one of the, these 3 files, admin admin screen, I think was one of them. There's some like changes that where I didn't do anything, actually. Like here, yeah, the stuff with the GeoCode, there, nothing changed. It's the same, and I didn't touch it, but still it says, like...
Well, there are deleted, there's some deleted code here.
But it's like, it just, on the right side, it only stops at 270 because if you go on, if you would go on, it's the same code.
Well, then there is a formatting issue. I don't know. Must have done something.
Better, because like, it's still, it's still the same, so...
I don't know.
I think it can be merged.
Right, right, right.
And a lot of dependencies left, so...
Right, right, so would you like me to review this one?
Yes.
Okay, so if I would review this, then I would... If this, okay, right, okay. Right, so first I would, I would, there are a few, okay, let's start from the top. So I can show you how I review stuff, like even a small PR like this, right? So you're removing a lot of dependencies here, right? That's all good, no problems with that. You are removing these dependencies, which I assume is good. Do we know if the application still works by removing these dependencies?
Yeah, well, I tested, but it's also, it was unused.
Right, so, okay, so it was my, okay, my, right, initial, it's right. Cons, blah, da-da-da, with styles, properties, right. Okay, so here, GeoCode reverse, right, GeoCode reverse, right. And this is quite a, this is quite a big... Quite a bit, so the purpose of this is just delete unnecessary packages, right? That's the only purpose with this, with this, okay. Okay, then I will not comment on certain things. GeoCode reverse, right. Why is this different? Let me view this differently. View fluids, what can I do? The bridge div. Why would this be different? I don't understand what this is different. Here you have some changes, you see, 200, 280, 290? No, that's the same thing, I don't understand this either. Just GeoCode, right. This must be a formatting issue, that I can't really see. Why does it, well, I can, I can, I don't, I think this is good, no problems with that. Approve, and I can submit this review, and this is still 192, so I can go ahead and merge this. Let me just see now what will happen on the next one. Right. Right, and now we have, well, now we have package log JSON merge conflict, so I can't merge this, you see? This is also a little bit what happens when we don't, I'm not saying that we could avoid it this, but we probably need to merge pull requests a little bit faster than 6 days, right? Let's see, these can still are too complex. Yeah, so I can't merge this, you see, I can't resolve this conflict on local thing, you know, on my, on GitHub here. So you need to check out your delete unnecessary packages branch locally and remove package log JSON, run npm install, and commit it again and push up again to this particular branch. Do you understand? Hello?
Well, I have to delete the package log and then run npm install again, and then...
Right, and then push up, commit again and push up. So check out the branch, delete package JSON, package log JSON, and then then you need to run npm install and then commit and push and push.
So only commit, but also git add, right? Always?
No, Tassilo, you're gonna have to revisit that. What does git add do for you, do you know?
Adding the files that I haven't changed?
Nope, add new files. Files that are not under version control will be added, but if they are already added to version control, then you don't have to re-add them again. Right, yeah, so let's have a look now on the other one. Let's see, this was the 92, let's have a look at 93. Right, and then we're just gonna go over this. Right. Package log JSON. Right, so this is, this one is called deleting unnecessary files, right? But you are changing certain files here, not only deleting them, right?
Yeah, well, I'm importing the files in the app.js there, so that's why I have to...
Right, but this change, this, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it. But this, this change that you do here, that change was done in the other pull request as well, wasn't it?
Yes, there was actually like, I did this by accident in the main already before, way before, and then I worked in branches, and then...
Okay, okay, all right. Then in this case, I will go on and say, okay, LGM, oh, looks good. There, it looks, no, it looks good to me, LGTM, that's what it's called. Right, but you know, anyone can do this, not only, I don't, you know, you don't have to wait for me to do this kind of things. I mean, these are very simple PRs, nothing is really happening here. So, you know, everybody else can do this, but I can confirm this, no problems. There we go. Let's go over to the next one, that would be 94. This one says it fails. Why does it fail? Cypress run, Cypress run. Oh, because this had... This one installed, okay, why is this? Radio warnings, 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 try and start, is expected page title set, send column, okay. Okay.
I think, like, I talked today to Carl, and he said it's about Mapbox, and he's still trying to fix it.
Ah, okay, yeah.
But he wants to ask you or the community or, like, online, on Twitter or...
Right, 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 right. So you guys need to read up on setting those environmental variables on Semaphore. Is, it needs to be done, right? It's the same thing that we do on, in the .n file, people. The same thing needs to be set up on Semaphore for it to work. So Semaphore is also a computer, so they, and they need to spin up, they need to spin up the application, so it needs to have those environmental variables. And since they are, I don't even know where that is. Is that here, or who set it up, 1cm, I don't know? Website 1, no, send, who set it up on Semaphore? Where can I find it? No, no. Right, this... I don't know how this, how this works, but... When he's, yeah, so anyway, if you talk to him, Carl is not here today, so if you talk to him, you need to tell him that those credentials that we have in the .n file, they need to be set up on Semaphore as well. If there is a ticket for this, somebody could update that ticket with that information, okay?
Yes, perfect, I'll do that, I'll talk to him.
Right.
Okay, I also committed and pushed to the deleting unnecessary packages.
Yeah, so Castres, you all have those permissions. Castres is asking whether we're supposed to have permission to go over accepting IPRs. I gave everyone on the team admin settings, so everyone has those rights. I think you all have those, those permissions. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Good, good stuff. You can do this, folks, this, right, admin, all, everyone is, Castres, are you even here? Well, you know, but it doesn't have to be scary, Anya, because I don't see you. Where are you, Castres? What's your GitHub username? Okay. Alright, so. Oh, it was there, no. Uh, I assume that he says that, uh. There you go. I will make you an admin too, so, so Anya, Castres, Tassilo, everyone, it's, this is not a problem. If you happen to merge something, you know, bad. Or make a mistake, it doesn't matter, everything is version controlled, do you understand? And we can revert everything. It's, it's not a super big problem, it's a problem, of course, I would prefer if you, if you, uh. If you don't merge shitty code or mistake or anything, make mistakes, if everything flows and if you. Perfect, like gods, that would be the, the, the best case scenario, but nobody is perfect. And we will make mistakes and it doesn't really matter. No, you're not, who said that? Is that Shima? No, that's Castres, okay. You are not, I am, no, I'm not, uh, no, so don't, don't worry about that. Uh, you can definitely review and merge peoples, peoples, but, but do review it, like, there's, there's so many things that. I mean, I've seen it so many times that you just, you know, people are just, uh, going over, uh. Fast, briefly, they don't want to be, uh, a pain in the ass. You know, toward their fellow, uh, team members. And they think that just because, uh, I, this is an open source project, we should be. Super duper always polite to each other, but it's not about that, Anya, did you raise your hand?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to suggest, uh, like, because the first pull request that I made, I actually reviewed them together with Tassilo. Uh, just to make sure, and I think it was a good exercise to just quickly try and explain. What I had done, even though it was very simple and, uh, and also the few doubts that I had left. Um, and I, yeah, I was just gonna say, if anyone is just as scared as I am to do that kind of work, then. Maybe we can do it together and, uh, make sure that we review. A, a bit like more properly, yeah.
That's perfect, absolutely, I would say, I love it, it's like, uh. The very idea of pair programming and then collaboration, collaborating on a project, definitely do it together. Definitely. It's, um. I promised a, a guy that I would never quote, uh, Winston Churchill, but I can quote him anyway. I never, Winston Churchill said something, I, I never worry about action, only in action. Uh, and this means in this context that. Uh, it is better to, to, you know, get moving and make mistakes than stand still for too long. You know, in, in these kind of, kind of projects, you just have to make. You have to make decisions and you have to move forward, sometimes you're gonna make bad decisions, but let, let's cross that bridge when we get there. Does that make sense, folks?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, awesome. Yes, you re- you are really fond of this, uh, this writing, this writing thing, I love it, um. That's great, that's great, uh, right, so here, uh. Uh, on this one, uh, key, key indicators. Right, so you fix insights of all warnings, but you did rename some stuff. Uh. That's okay, I guess, these are not formatted, um. I, I know I'm picky about these things, but you should probably avoid having extra. Extra lines. Of code and also there needs to be a space between, uh, between these, in, uh, this last character, if you run a formater on this. You will. Probably see that, uh, but. Uh, I am not super picky about these things, we can definitely merge this unless you want to change that. And also I just have a question, why is this app CSS so huge? Uh. Um. Yeah, Tassilo.
Um, I think because like I have all the styles in there, I think maybe I styled too much also because I. Said this button in this way and then this button has an own style and.
Right. Yeah, because you, you do have a lot of inline styling, I've seen, like this, this kind of things. Uh. Um. In several places, uh. But, yeah. Imagine there was, there was something else here that I saw, class name indicator. Class name.
Yeah, actually what I did here is I, I took out all the, um, like in the key indicators file, I, I took out the. Inline, um, CSS and put it into the app dot CSS because. Um, because it became messy all over the project and then.
Right. Okay, gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, the object. Right. Right, so, um. Uh. Yeah, well, uh, I guess. If you've run through this, I mean, it's hard for me to, to say whether all of this works or not, because there are some, 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 um. Uh, there are some styling changes, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know. So usually when, when, when I have changes that. That in, involves some, some styling, then I would love to see some screenshots, uh, on the, uh, on the PR review. Uh, but I would also like to see some, some tests, you know, it's very hard for me, uh, and, and it doesn't feel. So good to be, to, to be honest, uh, to, to merge PRs where there are no tests, but. Since these are just chores, uh, fixing some, some issues, then, uh, then I don't really mind, uh, doing that, um. So I can, I can go ahead and merge this if you want me to merge this, uh. But yeah, so this is failing. But there is no, I guess there is no, uh, no, um. Um. No merge conflicts, so I can just confirm my merge here, you can do this also, you can. Merge that, yeah, thanks, Castres, thanks for encouraging me, uh, right, so this one is merged. And then what else do we have? Um. Ninety, ninety-two needs to be redone, there is no description provided here, and you see, I see these two coming back. Over and over again.
Yes, that's the two with the.
Yeah.
Well, the, um. This blue checkbox thing came.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Gotcha, info with styles, resistive sidebar. Imports. Right. Okay, classes, alright. Well, yeah, that's the one. And this is also present in another one. This is the same problem that you had on ninety-two.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, right. Yeah. I don't feel very comfortable in, 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 in reviewing this kind of code, but it's alright, I can live with this. Uh, alter status icon, where, 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 this is commented out code, okay. Okay, style, style, map, where is style? So why, yeah. See, I haven't used class components for ages, but why? I mean, you do have a CSS, that's, that was what I was talking about earlier, but I didn't see that on that previous code. You, since you have, if you, you have so much CSS in your app, app CSS, what, 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 uh. Uh. Wh- wh- why do you use with styles here?
So actually like the, the tutorial I worked with only used, um. Material UI and then the CSS within, um, the class components. And then when I finished with that tutorial, I started actually designing the platform, so. I had all these inline styles, but it was like, it's not so practical for, like, I didn't find it so practical using them. But then I just left them when I, when I still, when I already had a class and then, but when I created another div. Then I, or another class, then I could, like, just added a normal class and some, but sometimes I thought of.
So wh- what are your preferred way to do this? Is it with styles or with, with, with the regular CSS now?
Yeah, actually regular CSS is what I'm heading for right now always, but I'm thinking also maybe. Like styled components would make sense, but then like, I, I don't like in here that the. CSS is on top of the component in the same file with this weird format, like with the not CSS format, but the. Hmm, like. When all the words are together.
Yeah, 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 with a, uh, cam- a camel case, yeah, uh, hmm, yeah. Okay, so I probably, we, you probably need to discuss these, these things in the, in the dev team. Um, I, I, I have a slightly different opinion on this, so, but I don't want to influence you too much, um. Especially since you were working with, with Material UI, Material UI allows you to work with themes, um. And, and modify the, the, the framework so it, so it suits your needs, and I would. I would probably neither work with styles or styled components or CSS, but rather if you go with Material UI. Then just, just go with, uh, with, with, with theming rather, but that's a different story, I guess, right?
Yeah, I guess I would actually like try to move away from material like completely because. Uh, I found it actually, um, a little bit annoying to override styles when they were already fixed science. But, um, maybe I was just like not doing it, not knowing the right way to do it, but. Like writing important after the styles always also felt like.
Yeah, but in, in theming, you don't have to do that, but it depends, of course, what you want to, what, what you want to achieve, um. Uh, we, in, just as a side note, in another project of, of our, of mine, we were actually. Also doing, uh, or we couldn't really decide whether we wanna work with SASS or, or CSS directly or styled components, but we actually moved in. In that particular direction that I was just mentioning, to, to work more with theming. Because we also used Material UI on, on that one, but it's, it's, it's a decision that needs to be made. Uh, the way I look at it at the moment is that there are too many. Too many styles of styling, you know, you have CSS, you have this with style, you have material UI. And all of that stuff, so it feels, for me, it, it, it looks, you know, it, eh. It feels a lot and it doesn't feel, uh, so easy to maintain and work with. That's, I think that's my, what I'm trying to say. Uh, I don't mind this, I can merge this, and again, so can you people, so. You don't need me for that, uh. You are also administrators, so you can override this. Yourself, merge pull request, confirm. Merge. Uh, what else? What else? Uh, we have ninety-nine. Fixed warnings on this one. Again. This, verify, right, seven files.
Is there like a way like?
So is, is, it's, it's, sorry to catch you off, is there, is there a, a, a Zen Hub issue? With this fixed warnings on profile component?
Um, I think actually I, I didn't. Create one before.
Yeah, because we, we, we probably want, I mean, as we said that, uh, a while back, we need like a link to this, uh. To the Zen Hub issue, you know, fixes this issue or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
It's always better to, yeah, I, sorry, I catch you off, you were saying, Tassilo.
Um, no, I just wondered like when, when I'm start working and then realizing that I did some changes in the main. Or like if I had some commits before, um, is it actually possible to, to get rid of that before?
Everything is possible, uh, with web version control, but, uh. You know, we need to, uh, yeah, so you just, just, just formulate the question and Google it. Or if you have anybody senior with you, uh, then, then, uh, I can help you with that, but I need a, a real case, you know? It's hard for me to replicate that, uh, in, in, in a demo or, or, you know, answer a hypothetical, but yeah, you can definitely, um. Definitely.
If you would see this, this one, like, how would you, um, delete the first two commits? Like the merge upstream, ups, like the first two?
Uh. Right, I can actually show you this, so, that's, 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 uh, that's a good, good example, so. Hopefully, yeah, this will be recorded. Forty-five minutes in, alright, so here's the deal, here's what I would do, which one of these, uh, would you like to keep, uh?
The second, last, so, so merge upstream is not.
Those two needs to go, right?
Those two need to go, yeah.
So what I would do now is to, uh. Uh, git check, so I just wanna put this in a good state, so I have to check out the main, uh. Get, uh, let's see, get div, I might have made some. Uh, git stash. Right. I just wanna get into a good state, uh, on my, on my machine, so I need to get, just check for my remotes. And I have upstream, so I need to pull the upstream. Uh, like this, so I get the la- latest code, uh, from, from, um. From all the repositories, and then I just want you, I just want to get your fork of Send client. So we're just gonna. Get to that. Gonna get the URL. Like this, and I want to do git, uh, git remote. Add, um. Tassilo, right, Tassilo, and then this URL. And now, the only time I need to fetch Tassilo is now, so I'm gonna say git fetch Tassilo. And I don't have to use your GitHub username, this name is only for my, my reference on my computer, so I can call you whatever I want, do you understand? Uh, right, and this one. Right, so we're gonna go back to that PR that we just looked at, uh. And again, my computer is acting up a little bit, but. Let me see if I can take a sip of my Coke. And that is the ninety-nine one, right? Okay, that's the one. Yeah, today is just Coke, it's Sunday, it's a working day tomorrow. Uh, so. This one originates from fixed warnings profile component, right? So what I would do. Is to check that out, so I'm gonna do git checkout, uh, Tassilo. Um. Fix warnings profile component, right? That's the one. Right, why am I in a detached state? Well. Right, I'm gonna, um, git checkout, I forgot a flag. Right, so I need to do this thing, but I want to pass in a flag called T, I forgot that. Now we are on that particular branch. So these kind of mistakes happen sometimes, you know, one flag too little and you end up in a. In a weird situation, so we always need to read the output on the screen, uh. Um. Commented two times, no, no problem, Castres, no problem. Uh, right, so if we now do git, git log, um, one line. You see. So you want to. You want to keep. You want to keep, um, the, the last one or the two last ones? you want to keep um the, the last one or the two last ones?
The two last ones.
Right, but why do you want to keep this cleanup verify component?
Um, because also in the profile component um folder.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got you, all right. So uh, what I would do, let's see if I can do that, uh. I would, I would now do this, I would do git checkout main. So I will go, head back to the main branch and I will now get um uh git checkout a new branch and I would say new uh, new fixed warnings. So I'm gonna create a new branch on this one, like this. Right, so I have a, I have a completely new branch from the, uh, from the, that is created from the main branch. And now I want those two, those two commits on that particular branch. So I'm just gonna copy this reference code and I'm gonna do git cherry pick this, git cherry pick that, that one. And now I want to cherry pick the last one. Uh, git cherry pick the last one. And now I want to say git push, and I think I can do this, Tassilo. Tassilo, sorry, sorry, Tassilo, and I want to push new fix this branch to fix warnings uh profile component. And I want to force push this, this new, right, let's see if that works. Right, so if we now, if we now reload this, now we only see those two, you see? So I rewrote the history on this one. So I don't know if you're more clever after my explanation like this, but that's the way I would do it.
Yeah, very, very helpful, thank you, I rewatched this probably a lot of times.
Yeah, yeah, right, so you basically, you basically create another branch, you, you, you pull in those commits that you need, want to keep by using the git cherry pick command. And then you push up to that, to the branch that you originally wanted, you know, that you called, so, you know. This is, if you, if you look at my screen now, you know, the first one on before, you know, on this side of the, of the colon is the new branch and then this is the remote branch that you want to, to push to. But since, since we had a different um commit history, I needed to pass in this uh F flag because uh I, I needed to force push, to overwrite the history. So that's, that's what it, what happens, since now, since I, uh, since I uh, since I coded on this, uh, then uh I can't merge it anymore. So Anya or Daniel or Castras or anyone would have to merge this, okay? Uh, yes, Castras, you need to accept that invite in order to be able to, to uh, um, to do anything on GitHub. Uh, right. Um. You. N B M S L again, this looks good now, so I can merge this one, all good. So the only one that is outstanding now is the ninety-nine. And then somebody merged mine already, okay, cool, thank you, and the actions workflow. That's the way it is, folks, and now instead of, what was it? Um, seven open or six open, we have two open PRs and that's, uh, that's progress. There was seven, okay.
Yes, thank you so much, perfect.
Yeah. But folks, these things needs to happen on a daily basis or at least, I mean, they, they shouldn't be, you know, waiting around six, seven, eight days, there's no need for that. Um, the thing is that the longer they wait, the, the, the harder they get to, uh, to review and merge later on. But uh big kudos to you there, Tassilo, for A, putting in the hard work, but also keeping the discipline to uh, to always branch off from main, main, main branch. So there was not too many duplicated PRs, you did stumble a little bit on those, on those um small changes, but other than that, it was really good. Good work! Good work. What else do you want to talk about, people? In this support session? What can I enlighten you with?
So I, uh, I had thought about maybe addressing the onboarding new participant topic.
Hmm.
Just to make sure uh what's maybe missing to do that, uh, to have something, some sort of process ready for that.
Hmm, right, I think that we should definitely uh create an onboarding document. What would, what do you say about that? People.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so I just checked out the new branch and let's just code. And let's um see if we can start VS Code if my computer survives that. Should, sixty-seven percent, not that bad. Right, uh. Are we still only on title test in Cypress? Yep, should probably start writing more tests. Uh, let's see, uh, we had, we had, where's that document about? Oh, I need to pull, shift, uh, right, git, uh, git pull upstream, uh, main.
Uh, just a minute ago, you, you just pulled upstream and so is there a difference between pulling upstream main or not?
I did not pull upstream. Well, I did, yeah, but then I merged a lot of stuff, do you understand? Right, yeah, so uh, um, so you see, this is, all of this is the code that I didn't have. You see that?
Yeah.
Right, so now I have that, so if we just do git, git log one line, we can see that we have a lot of merge, merge pull requests, uh, commits and so on. So that's, that's what I needed to have and we have docs. And we have create a pull request, uh, uh, documentation, that is the one that was merged by Castras, I guess. Uh, and we can just add more to come. Dot, dot, dot. Right, okay, so I would say that uh we can create a new document here. New file. And we will say onboard ding process. All right? Right, so in the onboarding process, let's have it here. What should we think about when we onboard uh new members? Any ideas? We could.
I don't know if they should have an intro- introduction about the project.
Right, so um, so that is, that would be uh, um, uh, like, so on the first step, like, yes, definitely, an introduction to the project, good idea, so uh, you know, learn, learn about what this project is all about by reading, eh, I mean, we do, we do, we probably need to have another document or, or at least a, a section in the Readme file about the project, right? So um, uh, yeah, like the, so, so this, the, 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 um, about section in Readme, Readme, and, and we just need to proper, probably say to do uh add this section, it's about, out of scope of, for today, uh, to the Readme file. Uh, but we definitely need to have that, right? Uh, how else can they, how can they learn about the project? So should we ask, um, should we ask a, a new potential project member to join a meeting, um, uh, where they can, can, or reach out to somebody, we can say here, uh, reach out to uh Tassilo, for instance, uh, for, 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 if there's any question, if you have any questions about the, the, the scope of the project, you can reach out to the project maintainer, we could have something like this.
Hmm, definitely.
Yes.
Right.
Or also join the Slack channel.
Yeah, any que- uh, questions about the, the projects, projects scope? Please reach out to uh Tassilo uh on, and then dot, 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 we can up, uh, uh, update this later, right? Uh, so to join the, the uh project's uh Slack channel on Agile Ventures Ventures uh Slack, Slack, of course, what else, right? Uh, Slack, uh, and there is a link to that channel and, uh, let's see, we can find that link by, um, let's see, how can we link to a channel? I think we can link to a channel, first of all, we need to go to the right one. Um. Uh, Zen Hub, da, 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 members in the settings, starting a, right, show more, leave channel, settings. Um. Right, there should be, there should be a way to link to a channel, how the fuck? Uh. Integrations, what is that? No, that's not it. There should be a link to this channel. Uh. Anya, I used, I think you said that you were using the um, the, the web version of this, of Slack, right?
Uh, yeah, because I, I, for some reason, the Slack app on the Windows, uh, it just keeps crashing, so, yeah.
So if you navigate to the SenfCon uh channel, could you send that particular link in Slack or something? There must be a, a URL to that channel somewhere.
Ah, yeah.
In the, in the web version, I, I thought I could find it somewhere, but I can't. Why can't I do that? That's weird. There you go. Right, this must be the one then. Okay. Right click on the channel name? Uh, yeah, oh, copy link, right, 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 there it is, okay, good stuff, thank you, Castras. Uh, so I can right click on it, it's probably the same. Same one that we use that Anya posted, let's see. Uh, Slack, uh, on Agile Ventures, Thomas, and not ventures, and uh, we can, this is, um, uh, this is Markdown, so I can do this. And if you people don't know Markdown yet, you should definitely update your Markdown skills. Agile Ventures, but you use AppSlack, okay, so that's a slightly different, uh, slightly different link, but the code C O two nine, yeah, that's the one, this, this last part is the same thing with both yours, your link and my link. There it is, and oh yeah, I saw Castras posted that in this, in this, right, join the project, um, join the project Slack channel on the, like, the, here, there, there, you can follow along in discussions and ask your, your questions. Uh, questions, should you have any, should you have any? All right, now, uh, install the application on your, on your, your local host, right? Host, and then C, uh, installation instructions. M D for a step by step uh guide, right? Okay, what else? So if they have this installed. As I, right, so now we are, we need to have installation instructions and we need to have an, an about section about the project in the Readme file. So now there are two things that we need to add as a result of this onboarding process. What else can they, can they, uh, should they be able to do or should they do when they are interested? Any ideas?
Um, one question about the installation instructions, shouldn't they all just be in the Readme? Like, I'm normally the installation instructions in, within the Readme file?
Well, sure. We can do that in, in, in the, no? Oh shit, now my computer is really. Come on, give me a fucking break. Oh my god. Hmm? Hold on a second. Well, we survived a one hour and eight minutes, so that wasn't that bad, wasn't it? This time around, I know. Come on. But it is on, but it's on seventy-five percent load capacity, that's, oh, that's weird. That's so weird, anyway, in um in the Readme. Right, so we probably need to have a to do at this one, uh. First step is, so we're just gonna add a to do here and we're gonna have to up, update this later on, uh. What else, folks?
Is there any uh like guidelines that we want them to, to follow and they should know about or?
Hmm, that's a good question. Be nice, no racism, no sex. You mean, stuff like that? Or do you mean...
I guess, yeah, I guess that's very general. But, I mean, could also be considered. But I was thinking more in terms of workflow or process. Or is that just something that Tassilo would address? Yeah, I was just wondering if there is some kind of a structure that they should be aware of or not.
Right. I would definitely say that that we should ask them to follow certain steps, certain best practices, right? And I would say that this is the right place to at least mention them. And then we can elaborate on certain things in more detail in other documents or guides. But I would say that that we could do something... We can say something like that. I mean, if this is something that you want to do, guys, we follow the agile approach to software development, right? Development and pay... And would like you to pay extra or pay attention to... Or to follow... Or perhaps to follow these best practices, for instance? Is that how you spell it? And then here we could say... Like, "one". It depends, of course, what we want to follow. I can give you a few suggestions personally, but then it's up to you people, of course, right? I think that we would be very much interested in pair programming, for instance. I don't know if you guys agree with that. But do you think that pair programming is a valuable thing for you at this stage?
Yes.
Tassilo?
Yeah, I think so. Like, I'm actually not 100% sure at the moment how pair programming looks like, that I will experience that and I'm willing to experience it.
Right. Okay. Just got a comment on Twitch. "Thank you very much for the follow, Zachary, by the way. I have a new website. Can you please review it and give me a rating out of 10?" I would love to. Not sure I have the time to do it today. And Jason Webdev, we were supposed to do a little bit of Redux and we might get to that. It depends a little bit. But we are at this stage going through some documentation and some best practices for this particular project team. So we might get to that, Jason Webdev. But not sure when, if it's gonna be within... Well, actually, we should keep this to an hour and a half, two hours tops. So it depends a little bit on how far we get with this one. Sorry to disappoint you on this one. Right, so pair programming. Pair programming. Programming. Pair programming. We think that it is better to have two sets of eyes on the code than work solo, for instance, right? It leads to better solutions and a deeper understanding of the implemented code. Or whatever. We can rephrase this later. Pair programming. We think that it is better to have two sets of eyes on the code than... I always... I mean, that much. This is the proper way to express this, right? I think, yeah. It leads to better solutions and a deeper understanding of the implemented code. Right, okay. So, I would say automated tests. Do you agree, people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, for me as well.
Right, okay. Sure, okay. And why are automated tests good? Apart from, you know, getting me off your back? Nah, kidding. Fast... They're fast, okay. It... All right.
It's a good way to, I guess, make sure that you don't forget to test some parts manually when you implement something or do changes. And I guess to make sure that the general state of your application is what you want it to be and not that you're breaking something when you implement something new, for instance.
QA process. Crucial part of... I don't even... So I don't have crucial... Is that how you spell this? I don't know. See, my English is not that super good.
Just remove the second "you".
Right? Right? This is... Right.
I think.
Yeah.
I cheat because we have the same words in French.
Oh. Write tests, not too many, mostly integration. Gillem Rauw's famous quote. I totally agree, Jason Webdev. I, you know, most... I, you know, when in doubt... I think you and I had this discussion, Anya, the other day, right? Acceptance tests versus unit tests. And I think that I said that I would... If I get to choose, I would choose acceptance tests any day of the week. And then if you really need to gain a deeper understanding of how your units works, then you should go with unit testing. So, if you need to prioritize... Price, go ahead and write acceptance tests first. Primarily, primarily. Go ahead and primarily focus primarily focus on acceptance tests primarily. I don't even know if that... I'm gonna run this through... Or somebody needs to run this through tests, through Grammarly or something. Unaccepted, then... But... But if your feature involves complicated or complex units, units, components, do spend some time and energy on unit tests. Unit tests. Unit slash component tests. We would say something like that. Component tests, do spend some time. Yeah. So Jason Webdev says that I think unit testing makes sense for backend API DB updates, but for UI testing, unit tests are next to worthless, in his opinion. And that acceptance tests for UI all the way. I agree with you to like 85, 90%. I would say that I try to... You know, my opinion is that if your components are complex, if you have a lot of logic or if you extract some logic into modules and encapsulate that in functions or modules or whatever, I would say that unit tests or component tests could be useful as well. But I do agree that acceptance tests, if you get to choose, especially in a project like this, that is UI-heavy as hell and with a dev team that perhaps is just getting started with the testing strategies and recipes that we are gonna use, then acceptance tests are the best way to go. If you read this and, you know, don't think about the spelling mistakes, perhaps, do you agree with this statement, team? Anya, Lanya, Tassilo, all the guys?
Yes. Sounds good.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Right. Automated, right. And as a connect, like a sub-topic to automated tests, I would say TDD, BDD, right? So, just a disclaimer, and I'm gonna add this to the document because... So, all the talk about write... About write tests first and only then start writing implementation code. Sounds fucking... No, sounds great in tutorials and books. But reality is not that simple. Right?
What is the BDD again?
Behavior-driven design, which is basically the thing that, you know, what I always talk about, outside-in. So we start with focusing on the user and the user's interaction and then move inwards and start to build stuff, right? It's a variant of test-driven development, I would say. But, you know, it sounds very awesome when you say "all the tests needs to be written first and only then would you go on and write implementation code". That is not that... It's never that simple. And I've been doing this for seven, eight years now. And I found it to be a pain in the ass seven years ago. And I find it to be really hard today as well to always stick to this process. I was working with some fascists back in the days that were really super-duper strict that if you didn't have a test, you couldn't write a single line of code. And I can see, you know, the theoretical value of this, but in practical terms, it's really hard. But what I would say is that try to use the process of writing a test case as... So try to use the process of writing a test as a way to gather your thoughts on about what you want the end user or stakeholder, you know, to experience. Experience and a general... General... And gain to gather, 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 gather your thoughts. To gather your thoughts about what you want the end user to experience and a general idea of how your feature will... Or feature will be structured? Can you say that? Structured? Right, so what I'm looking for here, in terms of advice to whoever is... We're gonna onboard, is that, you know, the process of writing a test is a good process in itself because it forces you to think through what you will be doing in coding and so on. And you don't have to be, you know, too hard on yourself or too strict or whatever. Because at the end of the day, we all have to agree that change is the only constant. And the change can come in big shapes, you know, on macro levels, but also on very tiny micro level where, you know, you think that you want to do something in the beginning and then you just change your mind or you gain a little more insight into the situation and you will just discard of some of the strategies that you had just an hour ago or 30 minutes ago. So you shouldn't be too strict, you know. Don't be too hard on yourself, on yourself and the TDD. And try to follow the... The TDD doctrine. And try not to follow to... No, no, you should be... So Castroz said you maybe should not be hard on others. You should be very soft on yourself and a fascist and asshole toward other people, I think. I'm kidding, of course. You shouldn't be too hard on people. Don't be too hard on yourself and try to follow to... Yeah. I don't know if this makes sense to you people? What do you think?
It does, definitely.
Yeah, for me as well, it's making sense, so much sense, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Right. But, you know, having said... So just the disclaimer, you know, just having said that we will not accept any new code that is untested. Untested. So if you don't follow test... Test... Let's see, they follow test first, code second, then at least write tests afterwards. After the fact. Do you understand? Like, so what I'm saying is that I'm not... I don't wanna be too hard on people saying that you have to follow the TDD or BDD, you know, like always test first and then implementation. Test first, implementation. But I would say that if you choose to just code away, hack away, whatever you want to do initially, I would at least write tests after the fact. Like, before I submit my PR for the final review, I would like to have a test case included in the PR. Would you agree with that?
Yep, makes sense.
So for an understanding, also, like, for the moment when making things right, also, we should always have a test. So like, if we say, like, implementing multi-language...
Yep, yep.
Definitely also with test.
Yep, yep, yep. All features. All features need to have tests. Chores don't... I mean, like, if we take the I18N, that's a feature. That is something that will be visible to the... To the end user. The ability to choose between Swedish... No, sorry, not Swedish. To, to, to the end user, the ability to choose between Swedish, no, sorry, not Swedish, um, English and German, right? Uh, so that is definitely a, a testable case. Uh, if I, you know, or Icelandic. Uh, but, um. But chores like silent, silencing the, the warnings or things like that, that is, these are, these are just chores. There's no, no visible. Uh, visible, uh. Changes to the interface, uh, and you don't have to write tests for that. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Right.
Yep.
And look, Jason Webdev says that I eighteen N is a tricky not to crack in terms of testing or in terms of implementing. Uh, either way, whatever you answer, the answer is no, it is not. Uh, it's actually a pretty straightforward, uh, thing. Unless you follow, unless you believe those guys that make things overly complicated. There is a very simple way to, uh, to, to add eighteen N. Um, the, the thing is that the, the maintainers of the I eighteen next, which is the, the, uh, the, uh, package. That is widely used by React or in React to implement I eighteen N. I don't know what, what went through their head when they wrote the documentation, but it's, it's, it's just too much. Um, they, they make things overly complicated. There is a very simple way to implement that. And it's also fairly simple to test and let, as long as you, you know. Check yourself and, and stay on top of, of, of certain details. Uh, so that shouldn't be too, too much of a problem. Alright.
Actually, can, can I maybe ask directly now about this? Like, should we, like, would you go for I eighteen next or?
I eighteen next, yeah.
I eighteen next, not React until?
No.
Okay.
No. Uh. Uh, good night, Castres. Pus a, pus a bonne, c'est moi. Uh, see you later. Um. No, I eighteen next is, is, is in my opinion the best one. And then there are, uh, few extensions to that. So you can detect the, uh, uh, the browser language, which is how we kind of formulated that story. That it should be based on, on, on the language of the, um. Uh, of the browser, that if I have, if I have, if I have German as the default language, then I should see the German interface, right? Uh, right, okay. What else can we tell people that we are onboarding? Um. Um. Uh. Uh, up, 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 um. Is there anything like, uh? I mean, we do write, uh, React, right? So we could do. Um. We could ask them to follow some, a set of best practices. I think there is, uh. Uh, thing from, let's see if I can move this. Right, I can move this down here. Right, so I think, uh. There is a React best practices twenty twenty-one. Let's try that. Um. There is no need for us to reinvent the wheel, I think. Uh. Blog, 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 blog. React resources, let's see. React source, no. Reddit. Instead, you know, the topic of best practices is a, is a clickbait. Uh, a lot of people will talk about that, but Hackenoon is a, usually a good source, but I don't know. Uh. For, for, uh, I think for Ruby and, you know, when I, I work a bit with Ruby on Rails, I know that, um. Uh, Airbnb, they, they have a Ruby on Rails best practices. I think they have that. And I, and I, I just follow that as much as possible. Uh, but there should be like, uh, something from the React core team about best practices? I don't know, uh. Let's see, core team. Uh. Follow test. Right, CSS in JavaScript. Let's see, let's, let's look at this one. Uh. I don't know who this guy is. I have, I don't know. Reusability, small and functional specific components. CSS in JavaScript. I don't know if I even agree with this, so. Consolidate duplicate code. Right, uh, right. This is clickbait. This, uh, come on, I don't know. Uh. Conqueror of the worlds, right. Uh, we probably need to find something. Perhaps we can't solve it today, but we probably need to find. Uh, a, you know, a reliable, uh. Source or set of, of best practices for React, uh. Uh. So we can kind of adopt to our project. Uh, design principles. Let's have a look at this one. Uh. Functional components would be the, the thing, Jason Webdev. We just got a question whether we go with functional or class components. So, to put this in the context, this project has a lot of, uh, class components, but I would say that. Um, if, you know, if I would push for something, I would push for a refactoring to, uh, to functional components. I don't know, Tassilo, Anya and Daniel, if you agree with me?
Yeah, definitely. I, I started to refactor a few files into, um. Functional components and code by that, like ten lines already, so.
Yes, for me as well. Uh, I do agree to change into functional components. I'm just trying to figure out how to do that, uh, with the tax I did agree with Tesla.
Hmm. I would say that, um. This is, this definitely calls for tests if you want to make that, that, because. So, so my suggestion here is, is this, that if you want to move from a class component to a functional component. This refactoring is such a big, big thing that you need to cover the desired, uh, um, functionality. Or the behavior of the, of this, of, of a component in your test first. Let's say that you, you are gonna refactor a class component that works perfectly fine. It does exactly what you want to do. I would definitely write a test first, then comment out the entire class component. See the test fail, of course, and then start to rebuild the same behavior using a functional component. Until your test goes green again. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right. Without, without automated tests, that kind of refactoring is extremely hard, in my opinion. Uh, it's really, really hard, hard. Uh. Right, interoperability scheduling. I don't know if this is. If this is. Uh, relevant. But I would definitely. Uh, um. Uh, I would definitely link to this in our document, uh. So I would say something we follow, we try to follow. The design. Uh, the React design principles. To the best of our ability. To the best of our ability. And we would like you to do the same. Right. Uh. I'm trying to keep a tone that is not demanding that, you know, uh. Apart from, we will not accept any new code that is untested. No, but, I mean, we can, we can, we can't do a. More than, than try to follow these, these principles. So, so, but please, so please give, give, uh, the, give them. A good read and. And, um, discuss. Discuss them within, within the dev team or with the dev team. If you don't, uh, understand. If you have hard time, um. Internal, internalizing them. The, there's, there's a risk. There's, there's a good, there's a, there's a good chance. That you are not alone in this, in this. Okay, because if, if people don't understand something, there is probably other folks that also have hard time understanding the same thing. So, I think this is good, good, good thing. To mention, design principles, principles. Uh, to the best of our ability and we would like you to do the same. So please give them a good read and, and, uh. Discuss them with the development dev team if you have hard time internal, internalizing them. Right, what else? Any ideas?
Sounds good so far, um.
Um. Perhaps we should say something about, um, code of conduct. I mean. It is an important thing. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, we have. Or we follow, uh, code of conduct. Uh, based on. And let's see, because we do have in another project of ours, let's see, in the website one project. We do follow, we do adopt, we did adopt a code of conduct based on, uh, kind of standardized COD. From, and, from an external source. Let's have a look. What did we use there? We are so nice to each other, so nobody needs to, to, uh, ever read this document. Right, so here we said something, "In the interest of fostering an open and welcoming environment. We as contributors and maintainers pledge to making participation in our project and our community a harassment-free experience for everyone. Regardless of age, body size, disability, ethnicity, gender, identity. And expression, level of experience, nationality, personal appearance, race." I think this is a, a very nice paragraph. And, you know, could we adopt this as part of our? Uh, of our, um. You know, onboarding or, or, or attitude toward each other?
Yep.
Yes, of course.
Right, can I, can I just like be blunt and just copy this right into our document? Uh.
If you give the source, I guess.
Once again?
Uh, I guess if you, otherwise it's just for, from, yeah, sure.
Yeah, this is from us. This is from our own, uh, our own thing, right? I'm kind of interested in who wrote this. Uh, let's see. That was Sam four years ago. Okay. Uh. Right, uh, so let's see. So. We've already, because it's based on the general. Guide, li- guide, guidelines. Lines from, of, of, of Agile Ventures. Uh, ventures, Agile Ventures. Uh, that. Ventures, uh. And then basically in the interest. Right, uh, that states. Uh. Yeah. So we can just have this as a, as a, as a quote from those guidelines, right? And, let's see. So examples of standards, um. Uh, examples of behavior that can reduce creating a positive and, positive environment include. Uh, yeah, me too, Anya, actually. Uh, using this, right, I can link to this, to this, um, to this document here. Uh, I think that is enough if we do that, at this stage at least. Um. Right. Okay, um. Right, so this one would be this, right. Uh. Right, okay, so, so could we, could we settle for that, that this kind of does it for, for us today in terms of the, the onboarding? Document?
Yep.
For now?
Yeah, definitely.
Let's just call it onboarding, actually, because it's not a process per se, but just like guidelines, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we could add like a preamble that we welcome all people to join us and help us and yada, yada. But we can do that in the second iteration. I think for now. You know, we try to address at least the most important issues.
Awesome.
And we also know what else to do, right? We need this, this about us section or about the project section and then the, um. Um, there was another one, uh, what was it? Uh, installation instructions, right? So this is a very technical, this, this would be a very technical guide. And this, the about one would be just about the, 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 the problem statement. What is, what is this application solving and so on. I think so. Right, folks, uh. That will kind of, yeah.
Um, like what's in the readme right now is actually, um, should be covering the installation process, right? Maybe there's not the stuff with fork first and.
Yeah.
But owns, I think. That's what we're looking for, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, all the fork this, clone this, install this, add the dot end file. You know, start this, you run your test by this and that and so on and so forth. Anya, thank you very much for dropping by. I see you and say hello to your husband, uh, from me. And I, and I see you, uh, uh, see you Tuesday. Uh. Yeah, definitely, Tassilo. That's exactly what we need. Uh, git, uh, commit, uh, am adds, uh. Onboarding document. Right, and git push origin, uh. Onboarding doc and then I will just create a new pull request. Somebody can review it. And we should be good to go. Uh.
So if we like erase the to-do in there and, um, make changes, maybe, um. Should we just, um, do it exactly the way you did it with my, um, with my branch, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Right. And we didn't really had a, had a, I don't know if, uh, we didn't have a PT store, our, our Zenhub story for this one. But, uh, it's just documentation, so it's not a very important, uh, important thing to have on, on, um. On the tracker. Uh, we should be, should be good. Uh. Right. Uh, okay, so I think that will do it for us today, Daniel and Tassilo. Uh, I need to take off to, family's waiting and I have some work to late night, midnight oil to burn. Um. So, I see you guys on Tuesday, okay?
Yes, I, I won't be there on Tuesday unfortunately, but, um, then I'll see you on Thursday.
Make sure to, to, you know, uh. review stuff, merge stuff as much as possible, and let's write a few Cypress tests and you know, so we can, we can get the testing process up and running, alright?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Thomas.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tassilo.
Absolutely. Take it easy, Dan.